Our meeting of the planning commission order. Legends of beyond the past.
Will you reply? Any comments?
States of America. And figure out what we're in Japan. Richard Frankenbach. Down to your G I S, I think. All right. Announcements.
I don't have any announcements that don't pertain to the agenda items already for today, so I can just wait. Give you some announcements when I get there.
To the conservative agenda, which is approval of the. March four twenty twenty five minutes. Um, many corrections, objections, additions, fractions. And fun. It looked okay. Consent agenda is approved. And we'll move to public comments. So, uh, you know, public comments has come here and state your name.
I don't, but I've been asked to hand the mic. With. Okay.
Without objection.
It's easier. Hi, my name is Karen Kelly for the record, resident of Bonner County, and I'm going to ask for some help from Jake. If you could put up for us this screen. Of the planning commission. From your website. When you go to look for information on the planning commission where. You say, starting August twenty fourth.
Got it to us here, Peter.
Yeah, I was stalling for Peter. So when people try to get information and this pertains to the minutes. Then you, it'll tell you that, well, that's not the one, but it tells you that the meetings are no longer posted under the planning commission. You go to the events calendar, which is fine, Jake. If you want to go to that one. And then you would click on today's meeting. And where would I find the minutes is what I'm trying to figure out. I can get to this, but there's no minutes anywhere.
Well, today's meetings don't, don't have any minutes because we're in the meeting right now. So past, past meetings, there's a couple of different ways to access. If you look at the meeting archive right here. You can categorize this by different hearing bodies.
Go ahead and pick twenty five.
Sure. So there's the revised agenda.
And where are the minutes?
We've had a couple of meetings. It looks like we need to post the minutes for the last two meetings because the previous ones. Were all open houses. They don't have minutes.
If you could, I mean, I really appreciate the transparency that the commission is trying to give, but you can't. Go and read what's happening or it could be better.
So here's, here's what the goal is for these to look like. You have an agenda, the minutes, and then a link to the YouTube video for that night.
Yeah. And then I have one more question. I think for your preparation for the March thirteenth meeting before the commissioners. I just need some clarification. You say that there's five hundred and five comments. And I can't find them. I mean, I've gotten. Thirty-two emails, sixty-seven. Public or thirty-two paper comments, sixty-seven emails and the two thirty-one from the G I S. So if I'm off. Maybe a little help just to know if I don't want to, I want to make sure the duplicates aren't being counted as a total comment. And misrepresenting to the commissioners what you really heard. Thank you.
So I believe you requested a copy of the spreadsheet, right, that we had put together myself and.
I got the ten day notice.
Okay. I'll make sure that gets fulfilled, but there's a list of all the public comments, not what the comment was. But I can get it sent over to you.
Are we gonna pass it around or come up there? So I'll probably a little short.
Okay, um, my name is Tina Kunnishigi. And I own. In the panoramic forest tracks lot. Eleven and twelve. Which is on the corner of forty-one. And Spirit Lake Cut Off. I own the first two lots. I am requesting that the planning commission consider changing our. I guess it's called the designation from rural residential to mixed use. Or what they call transition right now. We have. We are on forty-one. As you can see, it's the triangle lot and then the, the rectangle one next to it. Where the arrow is. The first two, that's. Eleven, twelve, and then thirteen is where the power lines go through halfway through that one. We have industrial across the street with the Spirit Lake Industrial Park. And then the triangle piece across from us. That isn't blue at the moment. It's light blue. They are putting in right now is six and a half million dollar indoor storage facility. We are. Within, I know previous maps, drafts of the maps had. Had all of the, the tract and the big. Parcels, you know, across from it all. They were considering it all to be industrial. We would like to utilize where we're at, since we don't really have any houses around us. To. Have it makes, have our lots, at least the three lots. There. They can coexist with the other resident, or I mean, um, industrial. Things that are around that area. We would like to take the rectangle piece that we own number twelve. And. Put an outdoor storage facility. Utilize, we have a hillside behind it. And that black line there is a, um, a forest service road. We would like to take. I think there's like one and three quarter acres of the bottom half of that, of our rectangle piece that's hillside. We don't want to disturb the hillside, but we want to utilize the flat areas that we have. To. Allow people for outdoor storage because they don't have any outdoor storage across the street. For their RVs, heavy equipment, trailers, things that they don't necessarily want to keep at their house. We are planning to put in a well. And so that we have water available for them. To say wash off their RVs before they use them. Put in a, a fence that matches across the street with the storage units. And, um. Prepare the ground for the heavy equipment, so sixteen, eighteen inches of, of gravel, road base, things like that. We would be. Taking down the trees. But we would leave a barrier of trees around the outs, outside. It'll have all the trees. Nothing will be disturbed on the hill. We would also like to possibly in the future. Have ours be also mixed use so that we can. Expand the area if, um. We have more demand for it. Uh, onto our other parcel as well. Yeah, where the arrow was. Those two are mine and then the one next to ours is also flat, but it's the power lines go through half of it. So. Yes. Yeah, those two right there.
Lots of access on Spirit Lake.
Yes, yes. Yeah, the. I couldn't come off the highway now.
Okay, well, we're, we're. What we're doing is, you know, I hear that we're destroying managers' designation.
Yes, too industrial after the fact, but it, it makes it a little easier. Because we're designated rural residential, it would make it. At least for that area there would make it easier to. Since the comp plan hasn't been finalized is to have those designated mixed use. So that I can then apply for a rezoning to. To industrials commercial. Thank you.
You know, it, I've been thinking a lot about this too, since the last meeting we gone ahead and eliminated. Eliminated mixed use off of those major and minor. Collectors. And. And put them on the major and minor materials. And the discussion was to go ahead and take those. Mixed use proposals. And expand those, merge those where they all exist. Versus create new bubbles somewhere else in the county. So when we look at our descriptors. That's what we're gonna get into with our process, but let's do it back to. Did you forget my property, boys? I know, right? Well, let's see. Yeah. There we go. Yeah, this one's mine right here. I think what it is now. At the last meeting.
So that's what it is now. I believe at the last meeting I got direction to change those areas to rural residential by the commissioner. Unless I was incorrect in my notes.
So is the blue rural residential?
Yes.
Okay. In my understanding, the last time I looked at the map was that this was all going to stay. R ten. Yeah, sorry. My name is Jeremy Dunn. I own two fifty-five Culver and Culver Road. And at my last look at the map, this was all going to be left as ten acre parcels all the way through here. And I talked with my neighbors and myself. Uh, we were actually looking to have this. Be rural residential. And there were some on this side of the road that would like that as well. And so based off of the, uh. The code for rural residential that has been put out there. You know, this is a major arterial here and on my deed, it's actually a state highway. It fits where. Within seven miles to ponder ace. We're close to town. There's plenty of fire access. We have. Really good producing wells. Um, average of the new wells that have gone in are forty gallons a minute plus. And. All of the we were subject to have gone in have all been just standard systems. So our request was basically to kind of, after talking with a bunch of the neighbors, maybe take everything from here. To the highway and have it zone rural residential so that. We had the option, like I've got kids that I'm raising and be able to have them have a section of the property to build on down the road.
My name's, uh, Game Sellers. I own this. Lot right here to south of. Of Jeremy's place there. Um, we're on fifteen acres and like he said, you know, he did initially like to be able to possibly build something for his kids and. Kind of when we moved out here, that was my goal to be able to have my children close and seeing the cost of living and everything go up. I'd like to have my children stay close to us in that area. And if I could. We could divide that up to where we could. You know, put something out there for them and they didn't have to go far. It would obviously, you know, be the dream for my wife and I. So yeah, it'd be. It'd be cool if you could turn that area blue. And, uh. Uh, it's one thirty-two Pine Cone.
That one there, right?
This one here. His name's Andre. He's my neighbor there.
Is this close up there to the waste management?
Waste management is this property right here.
I just also wanted to point out that there are a lot of smaller parcels that do surround us. Uh, I think I have it on my sheet here of the different acreages, but typically five acres and under. I believe this is a seven acre piece. That's another five. These are two and a half. This is another small one here. So we already have parcels that are smaller than us surrounding us that. Kind of still fit within the parameters of what's being discussed.
Hello. I'm Baron Saxi. That one right there is mine. And we have some, uh. My in-laws are going to, uh, retire in shortly and they're four and a half hours away and I hope. Not to have my wife on the road all the time. For appointments, doctor's appointments, that kind of stuff, give them to. You know, what they need to take care of and I'd love to. Split that and put a house on the back of it. There's something that's, uh, bigger than nine hundred foot. Square foot A D U. So. Ten. Yeah, yeah, these, those three are all tens right there. If that could happen, that'd be great.
Mark Lynn Scott for the record. Bonner County resident, uh. My mom, Lannack, and I, uh, submitted some comments earlier today. And, uh. Maybe Jake, but Jake wouldn't mind pulling up, uh. The G I S map. This will be south of. Long Bridge Highway ninety-five. I submitted comments, the planning department along with documentation demonstrate the family's property. Um, appears to have been excluded and not given the same designation as all the other similarly situated parcels. Okay, uh, put your cursor up there. Okay, see right where the blue starts? Oh, ju- yeah, just, just, just down to left, right there. Yep. Okay, it'd be numerous parcels. The one, just move it a little, move the cursor to the left. Along Highway ninety-five. There you go. So everything from where I'm colorblind, that where the gray starts. Okay, and then on the east side of ninety-five. All the way north through where the yellow portion. No, actu- actually on the right-hand side of that east side. Correct. Exactly. Yeah, that's, that's all my family farm. We're not giving the same designation. If you can scroll out now, I think you'll be able to see. Everything on the, uh, it's the only property not share mixed use designation on the east side of fronting Highway ninety-five. From the long bridge all the way through Segal down to Davis Road. So it's just under four miles. That is all on the east side of the Highway ninety-five. That is proposed mixed use where the only parcel. Out nearly four miles. That is not. The founding property meets the descriptors for mixed use. In fact. It has multiple deeded approaches which have been provided in my email that I provided to you. In addition, I brought all the maps from I T D with the exact locations in the elevations to demonstrate that. Obviously, it's a duty of planning commission to prepare, review, implement. The designations and, and the criteria you have established fairly and equitably. To do so otherwise would certainly seem to be arbitrary and inconsistent. Since the Segal Subarea Committee made their recommendation, which I sat on that committee, we started that committee nearly seven years ago. Several of the descriptors and criteria for mixed use have changed. For example, the elimination of major and minor collector roads. As well as I T D moving ahead with a possible freeway interchange smack dab in the middle of my family's property. Jake, were you able to download or can you pull that map up? The I T D map? I, I emailed it to you today. It might be on your guys' files. I don't know. Yeah. But the, the, the point is this, and we, we've had several meetings with I T D in regards to where this interchange is probably going to be going. And it's, it's right smack dab in our family's property. And so. Certainly the plan when we were on the Segal Subcommittee. We were looking at that, but. The I T D's plan has been moving ahead. Way faster than it was six, seven years ago. And as I said, we've already had several meetings. Privately with them in regards to our property because there's no other property on this. On this proposed freeway that it affects more than our property. It's the only one with a huge big interchange. In interchange, uh, is it on your files? Okay. Oh. Well, it's going to be. Right there. So that entire interchange that we see on the east side Highway ninety-five is my family's property. It's going to wipe us out. I don't see the gunners here. Arguing for our behalf. Maybe we need to get them involved. But. I think Dave made the. Dave Frankenbach made the comment last week to the fact the mixed use proposed designation should expand these areas rather than create a new bubble somewhere else in the county. And as that previous map indicated. Nearly four miles on the east side of the Highway ninety-five, our parcel is the only parcels. That do not have the mixed use designation. Move your cursor up. Right where it says to the end. Okay, move your cursor to left. Okay, that parcel right there. Then follow it due south of there. Continue. Continue. All the way to the, actually, we have part, part of the trees. So as the only portion of land, the only parcels that do not have the mixed use designation. On your guys' map and we respectfully request that to be added. Do you have any questions? Ordered by suburban as well. Yes, sir. We currently use it for hay. The actual use, we use it for hay. We've raised, we've raised potatoes on it. We've raised cattle. We raise sheep. We tried everything under the sun to make money on that farm and it's almost impossible. So we currently lease it up. To the Woods family for putting hay up. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
So all that, all that parcel right now, when it has access.
That's correct. Correct. You, you can see there where the yellow is. That's okay. So right, none of that comes off Woolsey. None of the property touches Woolsey Road. It's only Highway ninety-five. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, one more. Dovetailing with that a little bit, Dave Bowman, Bonner County. So what? Became of the idea of. Instead of converting. Uses that were rural residential or A F five or ten, or sorry, A F ten into mixed use to simply leaving them non-conforming like has been decided to do around the waterfront. Because that. I still maintain that that's really what should be done here. In most cases is if whatever, you know, there, there are non-conforming uses already, just leave them that way instead of creating this, these. Well, I wasn't even talking about those parcels in particular, but in general. Because there are these spots all over the place that we've discussed in several meetings. But I've never heard anything conclusive about how they're going to be treated. It seems. Yeah, there's. Well, the single meal, the gravel pit.
Yeah, they were.
Okay.
Believe that. They were, they were islands of that new land use, they decided to get rid of that and.
So. Okay, so what's? By what criteria are you deciding where to do that and where not to do it?
You know, it's, you know, the other part was that. That, uh, grow a requirement or monitor collective and something like that. Maybe like the minor act. I think a lot of the, a lot of the areas that were left non-conforming were very small lots along the waterfront. Well, some of them, some of them, uh, were rural residential or back rural residential. Some of them were suburban. That we changed the rack and they.
I, I realized that. I was speaking specifically to the.
Well, mixed use, you know, I think there's the islands. Yeah. Kind of like was coming earlier, the comment David did last week is that. Because now we're limiting. That mixed use to the highways and the major and minor materials. And we're eliminating, I don't know, sixty or seventy mile per hour, to spend even more emphasis on those highways. And so when we have some of these areas, it's only a journey. Like, you know, you've mentioned a lot of things that we should expand those areas versus creating new bubble around the county. Okay, any other public comments?
Well, because I was here last week, Karen Kelly for the record. I couldn't see the minutes, so I'm not aware that a decision was really made on the roads last week. My notes indicated you had a pretty stiff discussion. And, um. Well, you did mix use light, mixed use regular, and then you talked about roads, but I didn't hear a firm. Decision, but maybe it's captured in your minutes on what your decision was.
Change something. And James makes note of that. That was James' map. So that happened in another Christmas. Last year. And, uh. What should be the question on the map? I saw in that office, the computer is probably. Maybe not. That's good. Hey, you was completely wrong. I didn't know it in version fifteen. Um, that they. On that those changes were made for major. Highways and major and minor materials. We got rid of. That we got rid of the, the reference to major and minor. Right, so that, that, that is reflected there. And I think we also. I don't remember that. I'm gonna add it formally to the version we're currently working on. We did, but what we did on the, we added. We added an industrial.
There was some discussion of it, but I don't think it was a, a mutual decision or. I think it was near the end of the meeting and it was, this is a good idea. Let's formulate it some more. So, but our minutes don't go into the in-depth, you know, all the full discussion. It's.
Stop making motions.
Exactly, yeah.
Corrections.
So wouldn't you make?
Pretty much adopted. My red election, we adopted the language. If woman had suggested, but we eliminated. The wide industrial affected in part of mixed use.
Correct. Okay.
So that changed to the. I, I got.
I could share with you the, the current draft of that component if you guys like. I, I can share with you the current draft from last week if you want to take a look at that. Uh, you might want to double check that we're done with public comment. I didn't see anybody online.
Can I have a comment?
We'll consider it a public comment. As long as I get it back at the end, we're fine. And I'll scan it in.
I guess my, my thought on that, so I, I, I mean, you want to send out a little mention that I actually kind of had. Drive down to Miami, I don't know. I didn't go down there. Pardon? I do put that in there. You, you did. Yeah, yeah, I, I know you were. And, and so after I received that, I kind of had to drive it off down my own road. I don't think we actually did adopt separate. Designation. Yes, yeah, that's, that's what I understood. We were gonna say mixed use, and then we gone ahead and add some of those. That language, uh, in some of them areas, areas, uh, low impact, commercial uses may be conditionally committed. And some of those descriptors or persons designations. What on earth, again, come up with a descriptor different for.
Light industrial is a use in the use table, and it has a definition in Title twelve as it sits right now. It doesn't mean that can't be up for, um, for the discussion. I think. From what I understand last, at the last meeting, you had some ideas of creating a light industrial zone with a specific use table. Maybe I was off base on it, but that's what I was. It within the mixed use designation, yes. This is, this is what the consensus was, is the changes in the mixed use designation where it talks about commercial, industrial and light industrial can ex, can. Land use can coexist. That's the line that was added after your guys' discussion.
So that, that leaves no home then. Heavy industrial or not.
So we still have this as the list of zones that would be appropriate in that land use designation. So we haven't changed or add any other zones, zoning districts as.
Yeah, because I heard about the conversation was we can go ahead and conditionally, that was another question, conditionally first. Omit some of those heavier industrial users. But that actually happened.
And that, but that's why we put that sentence up, there's some reasons we think the initial.
Okay, well, the proposed language. Industrial uses require adequate order, server, blah, blah, blah. Uh, and primary transportation systems, the state highways.
I think there was some discussion we had about if we did create an industrial end designation. It would probably only apply during the minimum. Number of areas. That's true. And I, and I can envision. Particularly if it was backed up with. You still have to do the engineering area being industrial. I, I actually have more of a potential heartburn with going the other way that. I can envision a lot of what we would call light industrial uses that could easily fit into commercial area. And I'm not sure why we draw that line so definitely so hard. You know, basically, I've spent a long time since I looked at it, but I think anything that where they meant, where they fabricate anything. Automatically industrial, not commercial. And, and I could, in a lot of places where they fabricate stuff, probably frankly, doesn't generate a lot of customer traffic. Doesn't necessarily, any work they're doing, have to generate a lot of noise or other, other impacts to surrounding. Uses and if it's in a commercial zone especially, I'm not sure why we, we, we don't allow it. So that's, but that may also end up then being more of a zoning issue than things that. And I think there are also, I'm not, I don't know all around the whole county, but I think we're split. I think it's. Was that, that, that what we're gonna do? We're not gonna have any.
Yeah, we could look at the use table to receive. What uses, we would actually, I understand other points. But if you're, if you want back on the use tables, see exactly. How do we, how could we implement it and how exactly, see what it actually looks like because. You know, if you look at that use table, I think we can go through there on those industrial uses. And currently whether it was a B O P, we can put a B O C instead, so they have the condition. Just as an example. City of Ponderay, think of them all. The whole area is zone. But there's industrial use, and industrial. Is just a little bit of industrial zone in that area. Like where the fabrication shops are at the intersection of, of trying to drive and. All that's in all that area is going commercially, there's industrial, I'd like to see what they did. Conditions. It'd be interesting to see that, because that's our, one of our prime examples. Plus all this stuff where. Anyway, I think there's some examples. Uh, okay, so let's address some of these other issues. What does the, um. Comment on the mixed use. Well, it's, it's expanding and resisting use, which is what we've been talking about. It's to go ahead and consolidate those. Those areas so that we. Commercial sprawls. So as we look at those. Right, it doesn't have direct access. It does have, you know, range on the highway. Um, when we look at our descriptors, I think that's what we have to plot. I think also the mixed use. Although this, he can get off and forty-one.
In the cases, in the case of Segal Suburban Plan, we said, uh. I don't remember if it was a half mile or a quarter mile either side of ninety-five. So we, we would include properties like this. Which are very, very close. Um, with the high road.
What is, what's the property directly to the, uh, use? So we wouldn't be letting that. And is that strictly cut off road that comes down? Well, that's a minor part here, so it fits. Our descriptors. And, uh, you know, I think we have to be consistent. You know, you know, finding out to, you know, when we hear these comments, we need to look at the descriptors, descriptors. And, uh, see if they make sense. Well, the other thing, the cross, the, the area across forty-one is.
If you, if you recall our, recall our conversations we had with the cities back last summer, I think it was July. City of Spirit Lake mentioned that. They rely on the county to absorb the demand for industrial and commercial using these, uh, this area right here. So just kind of a point of reference from. That conversation we have with them. I believe they are working on updating. Some utility services to further expand their city. I think they've been hampered on sewer, but I think they own that large parcel to the north there.
Claire, play that. You know, on the third one, which is, yeah, that one right there. But there is no really room for a house or anything because you have the hillside on the down part of it. And then the, the power lines run right through the road. It's basically only used for people to drive up and down and make a mess through, so.
Yeah, it's all three, all of them, all of them border. Interesting thing about these, they do have access to. The ones further south up the hill. Have access to that, so they have really good road, they have that porch road, porch road. Which originally was porch road. It was access now to the public lands, but. But those lots are residential and they have, you know, up the hill.
I, I got a question. What, what is the neighbor saying if you put a. A storage unit in there, are they for it or are they against it or they don't know yet?
The only neighbors that we have are just me. And the other neighbor that built this storage unit that's driving these cars for us, they live in that other little tiny piece. And they're the ones that own it. We can't see them. And the only, we can't see any houses. There are no houses actually around us. That little, the course of which runs the bends right there, you can see that little house right there. You can't even see it being down on the bottom. There would be no noise, no major traffic, we no allow people to come and get their shit, you know, certain hours of day and check to have there's anyone. But, um. Yeah, so there's no neighbors. He owns the two houses that go around the hill that are on the plane there. And Dorothy, she's not giving anything without me, so there's no other.
My only complaint to it is that next thing you know, we're gonna be looking like Apple down there where we have all the outside storage. On the way in the quarter lane. Yes, off ninety-five.
We've had a couple of people killed since we've been there. Um, it's people coming down the hill with it. We've actually had some people that fence that they have on forty-one, couple of people have already run into it last couple of months. Um, and, uh, we had one long truck fall off onto our property. Uh, the trailer don't feel good. So that's our parcel. But the, all the other accidents are occurring on that corner. So, because there's a hole. And so we had later four cars that by the time they realized they have a flat, they're in front of our property. But they usually get a flat tire and we had four people with somebody. That you've got the flat from there. We have a line of sight of probably two hundred and fifty feet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, two hundred, about two hundred and fifty feet or so from that corner. Um, and we're, our driveway's four hundred feet from forty-one, so the other driveway would be about. Four hundred and fifty feet from forty-one. Uh, but other than that, um. If we actually put a driveway in there and create some more flat spots rather than the, um. Ditch that we have in there, we probably have less people not being able to get out. Or fixing their flat tires or things like that, so. Other than that, and there's not much traffic, well, there's traffic in the morning, but. We even can have school buses parked there or anything else, so.
When's enough enough? How many storage units or flat storage places do we need in Bonner County?
Actually, quite a bit. I actually, uh, researched it and it is actually with people going in apartments. Smaller places, more people having to live tighter in areas, the, um. The, the need for others, for storage. It increases twelve percent every year for the last five years. Um, and again, across the street, they are indoor storage only. Um, and they range between, I think it's a hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty dollars a unit per month. We would be creating and trying to. Well, we would make it clean. The industrial park across the street just has. A lot of people have their RVs and stuff, but, um, we would create. It to where we have lakes and things around us that people could park their boats. Um, and use them in Round Lake or, uh, Spirit Lake or things like that. That the nearest place to keep your stuff is on ninety-five. Um, because everything around us is all indoor storage. Um, and.
All right, I have, I have these two, I have these two parcels here in the corner and the one next to them.
Okay, um. Right, so we deal with uh, Mr. Dunn's property? There's a current comment. This is what's been printed. And people are just gonna, they're, and certainly they're good on that, those thoughts. Might not be. Then we'll refer to them. And this, this, this request is sort of. The opposite of what we, what we hear most uh, most frequently, which is to read. Uh, the whole solidality, pretty much add the quantity that you want to give. The primary comment.
Including the sub area plan. Submitted by that.
You know, when, when they. And, and they'll be great, and they're really, they're really hopeful. Which, this is about a seven. Government decision. But now, it's probably. Actually right of. Now, this piece, so this was the comment. I have a note that says, comment sixty two changes areas we will regulate totally. Along with the properties to the southwest. Regions here, which don't look like a bad change, I would, that would take like a year or so. That's, that's another I have from the last. And that's why this minute piece was left out because you follow the bounds of property by from the comment.
I heard we discussed it, but I'm not sure when we actually decided to review it. Because the time that law is.
There, where you have Culver and Culver going through there. There's another county road, if I'm not mistaken, there, that runs north. Off of Culver, that's Ne- Nebian. And it actually goes up and actually ties back into Highway ninety five there, so. Like, as parcels there, you were close, it, you're with it, but. Less than a stone's length. Of parcels. And then the distance from the rest of those to about five lane. Point three.
Where's the other version of the comment?
Um, can you point it out? Okay, it's a black line. Not just, just see if there's. Nice thing for me. Yeah, and, and like I said, there's. There's no, that one.
That'll shape parcel that has more than ten acres.
Only look past the fewest. There's, are we done?
Has anybody put a ban on this?
We, we have to really, really, really. And, and all the way, it's been, yeah. Anybody who's before the law has already. So my recollection, what it's. Is that we had pretty much agreed. Based on a lot of different factors, and we worked in a chair for these designated. The one, because it's fairly covered, we wanted to build a bunch of edge for it. The overall encumulus. The second, kind of, factor. Was we made a land, we had a land use analysis. We were looking at potential growth in, in ways to the, to some, to some. Going up or growth. And we found that based on the current, consulting that I just designated for the use of also. That even if it exists, what could be subject by them. The occurrence of any current. Or I didn't know your factor in that view, right? No, I, I haven't really seen how this really, but. But. You know, I, you know, because there could be, obviously there can be some special circumstances. I've got a, um. These terms. And we, we've been paying for them. Not some further division of property. But we can't, we can't really feel the way it's like. And we. Explain the circumstances, try to be a way, how do you have a best feeling like anything? As, as I'm looking at that. Since, you know, eight thousand five ninety five, furniture and clothing. Some of that area on the highway right there. Good action. Well, I can't refuse. In that, you know, my, my, my. Yeah, like that whole side, predominantly, that'll be many of those persons that are down, so it's a good idea. Which is just a little bit. Like there, kind of the hill off Culver and Culver, the majority of those are through right of way, and then we was on that side that they've got. They'd show it, but I think again, conditions going for an auto shop. Pretty sure. So that's a, that's already a, yeah. Commercial, like you, like you. On ninety five. Well. It doesn't have that access since a steep block that was just gone. All those properties to the north, but same, I don't remember. It says there's one parcel, three of the penny, that's that thirteen acre. Okay. Would, would you look at the comment, the thirteen piece area on there? Look at the rationale. The bad comment that had for. Wait, there. Yeah.
But that's, but that's your comment, right?
The world half a dozen with the same comment, it's all on the area of.
But, but, but that didn't pertain to that whole. Funny upside down new shake there, right? Specific lots. So I don't know why we would change that.
I think it was just because of the lot sizes, we looked at those comments.
So I remember it.
For instance.
Okay, and, and at these corners that walk. It was one possibly seventy four and a half. Thirty four, seventy, seventy. And there's seventy, thirty, thirty two.
Grab the mic, it's on, it's against, well, people that can't hear.
Yeah, I believe most of us that were kind of discussing that were strictly looking at. Kind of from this section forward to the highway. On both sides over here, from kind of the dump back to the, back to Culver and then down. With all the smaller pieces that are already within that area.
You gotta remember, like, these are making comments on, on areas, not on individual parcels, so they did, some of them listed. Specific property numbers, um. But when you clicked on this map, you couldn't click on an individual parcel or property and make a comment, right?
So, I mean, one thing I would. Like, see, it seems like. Setting aside for a moment, what we do with comments of performance. I think in general, that area should go back, back towards. I'm not sure I see why. Are about that odd shaped. Area. And make it. And then, then, then there's the second question of what do we do about comments? Uh, that we heard tonight, and I mean, I think I kind of agree with Alan. I, I don't think we want this process to evolve into. Specific considerations on the partial, it's like, I understand what you guys are saying. So I think the appropriate way to do it is to come back and. Make the case, change everything with the partial at some point.
I would agree, we need to give um, adequate um, respect to the work of the sub area committees. Bill, and the recommendation based community. It's like, that's the one you're keeping. For now. Hello, anybody else? Thank you. I, I mean, you guys think about. Like, you know, we, we had, we had the situation, but like. People, and then said, you know. That family that's gonna move here and people want to feel, do this about, and it's. You think that, sort of, yeah, it's just, it's a bit of a, but I, I don't know, I don't know. I'm gonna be a little obvious, I'm gonna be a little upset. And that, that is something flash or a family business is, oh, the problem. And if that first hand owner of the home there. Okay, so uh, then let's go to uh. So that, all that we were gonna evacuate, I think. That's right up. Alright, so the next, uh, earlier night was uh, Arkminster. Right? Well, this, this is just the. Dave, pardon me, you know, my, my recollection, but that is unfortunately. On the highway, that might. Saying I was like.
Uh, I have to go back, I think, I think they um. We, I think we imposed a north and south. Uh, boundary on that area where it is a. And I, I forgot, it was a quarter, a half mile either side. At least maybe in the north.
Yeah, I think it's not. It's where the storage is now.
Yeah. But on the other hand, um. I, I can understand the same logic for the fly, I mean, if you go back, at least, we've, I heard a couple of you say it already tonight, that we'd rather. Expand areas of mixed use rather than create new ones elsewhere in the county where they own this today. And we want them to be on major highways. So this all seems to fit those criteria that we're.
Well, I mean, it's kind of interesting because. You know, it waters mixed use. You'll, if you pull out, everything on that east side of the highway from Longbridge South. Everything that has, feels directed on the highway is mixed use, except. When you get to like that. I don't know that that's some kind of exclusionary. I have no idea why, um, that would be the case. You know, this, as Muggs mentioned, can't one to think of spies. Deeded approaches, not just a, it's actually a new approach, it's a little bit different. Uh, approach, that's been like a. Land town. Could be, could be back to where the current.
Do you remember Mark, what's with the sub area, how do they draw the map?
I thought we, we created a rhyme, we think it's pretty rhyme along.
All the way from the Longbridge Town?
That was my.
Okay.
That's something that's important, except then they're grounded, we're in discussion, and then it went. And my recollection, the way it went, because uh, there was also the section where the south side sewer. Those, we, our, our ideas, we wanted to stand, hold them all, and go on for the sewer. Uh, lines, that means you go, the sewer line, it's on planes, it's on the plane, it's on the plane. When you grow. So it looks like they're already instead of.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I'm in the, I mean. When I was working on this part of the map, I, I tried to match with the sub area. Through, it's a little bit difficult because the artifacts from the sub area, they're pretty hard to read. In, in the PDF form that they have. But, but that's what I intended to do, was to just match what they did on their map. Um, and. You know, I remember was, was this the way they drew it or not? I don't recall, it's been too long since I looked at it, but. Um, as I said, I think the other criteria approximately for the highway, not wanting to expand, not wanting to create new areas. You know, rather, we'd rather expand the areas that already exist, because it's mixed use. Big sandwich between the highway and suburban area. Um, that's what comes. Are those four rectangle ones at the bottom yours also?
Uh, the one on the bottom right is now. But those other ones.
That, that block of four, you know, the ones.
Yeah.
The, the, yeah, there's three of them.
You know, I think. The comment was about. Only the ones that actually have Howard Bridge.
There's just, there's nothing for, or the other three?
Yeah, there's a yellow triangle, one, two, three, four, red.
So you would want to change the yellow triangle to mixed use also, is that what you're?
Yeah, of course, that's, that's the only. Is there orders? In orders, uh, yeah. Is that? Is that near the sewer district? We get one part, there's a, I know that. So, of Bridge Boys, not, even though the line was up, they'll on, there's, on stage. There's a, we should find. You can see it.
Oh, okay.
That's, yeah, right, yeah. What side of highway there? Church side. Yeah, that property, property up there in the back, that's only access to the old, the, 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 the. Well, I sure would be there, but. West of it. That funny line, those speeding line up that bothered. That's the old, old, my area. And First Railroad, then State Highway, then County Road, then.
But this, this condition is what you are.
Right, but as Mark said earlier, we're not, they submitted a, I don't know. Yeah, it's, a lot, a lot of things have changed out there, including our. You know, our descriptors, that we've got to impede by mixed use, uh, we have to go ahead and point. Fucking expand those areas, so free bubbles and ITDs. Uh, and, yeah, they're playing the. I don't know why I was kind of hoping to just go away with them. Keep going. Keep going, so I don't know if, you know. Jake, pull those other maps up.
Where's yours?
I don't know. Highway. Yeah, the highway one. Obviously, yeah, that's. If, if all that property is gonna be accessed on the front of it, you know, see? Who knows? Well, yeah, and. The fact that there's needed access points is a, um, discussion point in the negotiation for railway application. Essentially, they're just gonna be trading now for access to the front of it, if that is in fact what goes on there. Hey, is there copies of those bees? Yeah. I, I submitted them. Okay, yeah. It'll be in this comment. Needed access points. Alright, so, what do we want to do? There you go. It's all in here, there's a comment in the public comment for that one. I think it's a, it's an appropriate thing to do with, at this point. And it's. Why is this one, this one isn't the other one that we just talked about, up and whatnot? Uh, I think the difference is. This one is. Incumbent by the future highway department, no doubt about it, no matter. How that they matured, I think that didn't change at all at all either. Even if it is. They only have seven drawn on that one. So. Yeah, doesn't make sense to have this. Go back to everyone. Well, if you can change the west side, why, why would you change the east side? Um, uh, where is the example? Can't change the east side, why not change the west side?
Yes.
So, you know, one thing, the, the, uh. That section, I don't even know the number is, but where the blue line starts, the yellow line, and that's a section line. So that, where the cursor is right now, that's a property that has been signed by the church has, it's going away. There's, there's no way that that use can, can maintain, that's what we told them by, uh. The front end drove is proposed, is there on that curve line, just to the left of the cursor. For those five blocks, that are three perpendicular east, west, and then north, south, point mobile, all the stuff like front end drove. There are already, one of them has housed on it, and all them blue one has housed on it, the other three are not. And those, those, uh, for one, two, three. That, there's four parcels on the north half of that section, just to the left, they are there. Those are all accessed off of, off of, uh, third way, really, two building.
Yeah, that, yeah, they physically have access to that.
Okay, fine.
And then we don't.
Make any sense to have an island or rail was eventually back there in the middle of the space. Um. Yeah, in my opinion, that piece that the person's on right now, it also has to be the highway access.
Yeah, it does.
But I, I, it should also be mixed use. Kind of a lot of whole.
Right now, there's a condition use permit on that property for the church use. Like the previous use of the old, moment where I was. Yeah, so I, I agree, that one for sure is, that particularly if we're gonna change the, the east side. Um, I'm, I'm less convinced about all the other properties through the west of that, because they're not accessed off the highway.
No.
Um, and I understand that rates are funny in the pen, I'm, but. I, I mean, it will be, right, what's, what's, what's on that, is on, you don't below?
Nothing.
The water there, I wouldn't mind.
Driveway at this point. Oh, where that whole block nine, that shit?
Yeah.
And it has, it has a, a home.
There's a, oh, yeah, there's, there's a home, we see it right there, it's in the church bar.
It's a very steep parcel.
Yeah.
Little piece of that, that's right there.
Different remnants of rural highway.
Yeah.
Coming down through it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think a bunch, but then the driver were back into.
A lot carrying, said. Top room, so, 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 of course. Then they have big down, that's where it's like. Carrying, uh, like.
Yeah. That front drove, you know, and we're at where the old highway was, so it'd be close to that house, but not.
Well, I think it would have been six, maybe, maybe even leave it there. The thing that we're changing to. Well, I guess. My thought, if we look at more descriptors. You know, just like for me to look at those other parcels, other night. When that, when they're sandwiched between the two zones. It doesn't make common sense, because we have to apply this, similar situation parts was happening, having same application. Descriptors probably say that. So on this one here, I, in my view. It used to happen.
What do you think about the, the parcels that they'll throw them.
Right. No, I say no on that, because they don't have them, they don't have friends on the highway, that's one of our descriptors in here, to pass out branch. So we have no experience of not following.
Yeah. It is what it is.
Because otherwise, the ones that are in yellow would be blue if there was not a sewer district.
Yes.
So, it is an island, it's a. But it, it's land use, essentially is, is residential. Right.
Okay, what would be a? I, I'm okay with passing, but. I would agree. So I would say, the, the, the four parts we were talking about, east side, I mean, uh, today, we're.
East four triangle.
Yep.
The triangle.
What's the front on that?
The triangle, the capitol, the square.
Square. You put there, no?
No, that's just your screen. One that is square, and then. If anything, I don't consider it. No, the one, two, uh, that, please go ahead. The one right in the smack, yep.
No.
Be split, right down, right there, split. Should be super. Put the point eight to booth.
Oh, can you, the order, and then what across there to the. And the, and, and, uh. I don't know what to do about that triangle down to the south on the, on the west side.
It's a.
That one seems to fit our criteria to.
You know, if it fits your criteria, it borders in mixed use.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll change that.
And it, it doesn't make it non-conforming neither, I don't think, right? It's a highway that's through, yeah, and while residential needs are allowed.
Okay, what do you want to do with this?
What are you gonna do with this?
Yeah.
But apparently there's always like another section, sure, sure, that's there.
Well, they have the same, no, and the same thing, the three rectangles below. That one, the eastern one. Also doesn't have access to the highway, or does, it doesn't front it. Nor does the. Yeah, so those three rectangles don't.
No.
That. It's the fine board and those. Three, not so. So, that one, you want to put it over it? You know, to try and use for, you know, sorry, one, two, three, four, you want to come do. Okay. Alright. What else you got?
I have a couple of.
Okay.
So, as, um, Chad and I were review, reviewing the map, we started seeing some more split designated areas. So he ran a tool and highlighted them all in red. And there are eighty-nine. We caught, we found a couple, some of these make complete sense, were just a small piece of it, it's like, take this one, for example. Um, it's a government-owned lot, and some tiny little piece of it is split designated. So some of these, I don't need your guys' input, I think I can give some general rule of thumb of the majority or government-owned. But there's some that really do require some, I, and I just got access to this, this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to review all of it. Now, I got a message from him saying it's good to go, and there's a whole bunch, we thought there would be a handful, there turned out to be a few more than a handful.
My favorite parcel is that it's just north. Northeast of, uh, Port Bay. The parcel out there that has four different zones.
So there's like a, is this one you're talking about?
Uh, no, no, go down to your, to your, yeah, to your, down to your right. Uh, or, yeah, just, okay, now, go ahead and pull the zone, the zone map.
Let me see if I have the zoning map.
I'm talking zoning, it's split zone, so if you look at. Let's, let's just, let's just do one. Okay, we're talking about this, this piece right here, if you have to look it up. This, this, and this, and this. It's all one parcel, one art, that has, that has the crack, egg ten, four story, and egg twenty, all on one parcel. It's all split.
Well, right now, we have it fixed as wreck.
Now, now, yeah.
Now it's, it's just wreck.
Yeah. Well.
Don't, don't, don't give them more, more problems to solve, we, we have a bunch.
So, as deal with the. Yeah. Um, well, I think, as a general rule, with the majority of the, the majority of whatever the. That just doesn't make the issue be a lot.
Okay. It will take care of a lot, but there are some large parcels like this, where it's about. Some of these are closer to a fifty-fifty, right? So, like I said, we can, I can click on these, we, we can use a smart editor, click on them, and you can just tell me what you want it to be, and I can, it's not a.
And I wonder, like, you know, set just some, that one right there, what kind of uses on it, I mean, if.
Yeah.
Parts will apply, and they have R five use in there. Uh, are we, if we're gonna create that use, make non-conforming. Doesn't make much sense there in that place.
Looks like that property is split zoned R five and R ten. So that's where the split designation came from, because we followed the lines of R five. What's that? Yeah, this, this is split, this is one parcel, right, and it's split designated and split zoned currently. Yeah. Looks close to a fifty-fifty, but it looks like it's a little bit more ag forest.
Thanks, why that?
We could do that, we can bring it back next week. Well, like I said, I've only got access to it today, so I haven't done a review of these, I just take off. Sorry. These ones here?
Move around it, too.
Like, that's one piece of property, this whole thing. Nineteen oh nine till now, I don't. Yeah. So, like I said, we, I think that the, some of the initial direction we got was follow R five zoning to establish the rural residential land use designation. So it ended up with a bunch of split zoned, or split designated areas. So. If. Sometimes the, the majority rule isn't gonna really make sense, and maybe some of these, we do want to leave split, but it sure makes it kind of hectic long term. This is one piece of property, this is a separate one. Sometimes, like a, a. You know, if the government came in and built a road or dedicated a road and did like a takings, right, and, or not a takings, but. Um, eminent domain to create a road, it split a lot, but the, it's been in that same ownership and. The legal description has it described on both sides of the street, and that's how we have two different. It's, it's weird. Which one? This one here? The one that goes down to the water?
Of those layers of.
Sorry. Yep.
Looks like they're all. That's true. This might be a tough question, but can we go to the owner, and say, will you be willing to divide the property along the line? No, they're.
Yeah.
Just have a parcel that is stolen. Right, they, they, they were on. And that's, that's where, in the past, you could do that for tax perks, because you were in two zones, you could do it yourself.
Yeah, but the zones don't affect your taxes, it's the use of the land.
Well, but I mean, up with you. Right, they did. No, I'm just like. Yeah, but, uh, well, no, that would be the mind. I, I would say, it's like most of the. Okay? Oh, this is down. Only part of the. That's the railroad, right?
Yeah.
If they're not, that's got to have something.
Looks like a railroad and a road right away.
Yeah.
You can see there's, that's the road, that's a real road.
Yeah, that's where, um, that, sure, that's, that's where, uh. People, well, cut the cost. So that's all down in River country. But, oh, watch. Feel where he's at. I do. Yeah. Right, so, reading serves on. Oh.
Okay. And the one next to the same? The, the bigger, uh, some of the other issues are like up on Renco, where you have. Or not Renco, but. Car Creek. Yeah, these areas where. Right? So you have like the majority of these two, and then a little bit of this, but how many? Do we, do we want to follow along the road? Some of these other areas, do we want to leave those ag forests, it just kind of a, looks like it followed a section line with the zoning line, so.
You know, it looks interesting, if you gotta hit and click along with the blues. And if that was part of a plot.
Oh. I think I have, uh, platted.
Because if, if, if those splits on, you know, part of a plot. Um, kind of shows the intent, where the, the vast majority of that plot is.
This is all part of subdivision, everything that's outlined in that grayish color.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is some platted subdivision, I don't know, I don't have the details on it, but. Looks like Car Creek subdivision, book five, seventeen. Tens. Fifteen, ten. Seven, five. Eight. Five, five. Oh, it's two. There we go, five, five. I have too many layers turned on, let's cycle through. Bring that one on. Five. What's that one? Uh, twenty.
That, this is a, that, this is a.
That's five point three.
You know, if they're over fives, and they're split only being R five and A. Like, next five. I mean, a couple of them.
I think some of these are no brainers, but, um. Okay. Leave this one alone, uh, leave it at a ag forest.
Yeah.
Probably a zone change sometime in the past. I, without further looking into it, I couldn't tell. This one here? Okay. Looks like the ones that are lumped are stuck together. Okay. Well, if you like, I, I can go through and make some recommendations, and then bring back just the ones that I have a hard time with, if you can give me some general rules of. Okay. The, the other thing I wanted to give is an update real quick, since, um, this. Land use analysis tool has been updated with the twenty twenty-four data, both for building location permits and. Um, all of the other criteria here, so your historical parcels. Um, I just got access to this, this afternoon as well, so I will, this next, over this next week, go, go through and update your graphs and update the. Um. All the data found in that land use component to incorporate the, the new data in that. Analysis tool. Okay. Unless you guys, yeah. You said one sixty-two is what you want to look at, Mr. Chair? Where's this at? Am I close? Look right in here, right? It said gun smoke red, is it one way or two?
Maybe, maybe that. Look on that red, red dot there, but.
Some reason, this search tool, they added the entire nation. Most of these, like, when you search an address, it's. Most of these, like when you search an address, it's specific to your county. I don't know what happened in that. Is it that one there? Banks? Is that his name? Yeah, I don't think that one's there. But that's a good one, right? Should that be five or ten? Maybe. That would be too good. Address. Should be like right up in here. Is it? That's the, that's the kick out right there, that peninsula. Right? That's the peninsula. Should be right here. Doesn't look like it's split at all. That's not right, cuz this, look at all the lots right there. It's this one here. It should be this Jonathan something. Okay. Yeah, it's this one right here. Okay. Some of these are gonna be really. Okay. You have another one, Mr. Chair? You have another one? If you do see any areas, um, that are just off, like ten to a hundred feet. There, we had them update and pull in the new parcel data, um, and try to align it better with our comp plan map, so. We're, I've still caught a few areas and kicked it back over GIS and they're aligning the layers correctly, so.
Okay, so, um, I think that's really. If you take that map and go over to, um. Uh, the queen. Okay, um, there's an area, it was at a meeting and we should, it was our first meeting. Um. Yeah, come on, talk this way. Uh, these, these lots right here, we haven't posed on this map, but if you actually go to the twenty map, those are zones. Now, um, so I don't know how those got changed. Yeah, I think, I think it's been the last. On me again, um. Do those have water and sewer? And zoning, like you. I think, I don't know for, for that, the purpose of suburban. And then, so if they're suburban, don't they have to have water? And or if, if you're through, if they're on a share bar system, it would be used more than they can size. Uh, they have no water, no community water.
Those are inside the water, I guess.
Yeah, that's what any amount you want. Go back to, uh, that trust group area we, we spoke about last week. There's one thing I thought, I went back and listened to a meeting, I thought we're gonna leave. Is that current or proposed?
This is what the changes as discussed last week.
Okay, and so that, that one blue, um, looking section, is it currently rec? Oh, rec? The zoning of R five, okay. And it's, what's the comp on it? Right, so that's, that's what caught my eye. So if we're following this. Why do we change it?
Why, why was it turned? I don't know. That's my question.
Yeah. No, isn't that the one that's the older? The big lakes? No, I, I have to, I don't, I think it's really more than that.
Let's see what they say when we're on that. You'll notice the map now says.
Yeah, that's about the ownership. Almost house force has a house on like. But that stuff, cuz that's right there where the creatures are. Um, and that's where the lakes. We probably had some discussion about that, some. Well, that.
All right, I'm. I can only still try to figure out your problem again, so I'm. You'll have a. Is anyone's work, if you ask?
Um, I have. The internet, you're coming with?
Yeah. Nobody else can hear it, it's important.
At the last week's meeting, Jake, you have the layer that showed that current C U P's?
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay? Hey.
This is, this is, um, this one's been applied for. I don't know why it's on this list, but it has not been approved.
Right, if, if you click that, though. It says, there's a chance there's a. What do you have a patient that thought it says something about a C U P?
So this, this C U P was applied for last year and then I think they were gonna withdraw. Oh, like I said, it shouldn't be on this list and needs to be removed.
Okay.
It was not in a previous C U P, like supposed to be. I mean, I mean, actually, I need to get that material for it. If people have access to it, so. Yep. I think the board has got on re-inification later this month. We have to face that one through. Yeah, I'll run that one later.
Any feedback, any others that you wanna talk about?
Majority rule much again, and then we'll get that again. Yep, I'll look at it tomorrow and get you guys an email when, you know when I'm done, and then I'll leave anything that's. On the border of the fifty percent rule, if it's the vast majority, I'll make the call, otherwise I'll leave it up and bring you guys the, the rest that we need to deal with.
All right, so we had, um. Don submitted a suggestion that we put in some principles. In somewhere in the text. I had, I started working the last meeting, um, trying to do a summary of the changes that have been made. We see maybe state that they're having a desperately, but. So any comments on, on those?
You want me to put either those on the screen?
Well, let's wait a second. Everybody read them? I did it. Well, why don't we do? I thought it was fantastic, just sitting fantastic. Right up, I have a few offerings to the band on what we had it here on. Um, I'm talking general, I know you're bringing up Jake immediately.
Is it, is it on our shared drive somewhere, Jake?
Yeah, it's under the, I'm pretty sure where to put comments from the board, so I had to get to the drafts and hurry to the name to go and do this dash.
Yeah.
Any other, and I'll, I'll share it on today's data, so. All right, so, um.
The only things done I had for you was, um, you started by the principle, the main principle, third paragraph, talking about world. Obviously, that I thought is very first principle because we thought, oh, we're learning. I can put on that, I thought maybe you'd want to, you kind of define the world and spread the wider scenario. I thought we might wanna expand on that, matter to what, you know, we kind of collectively see of the world and maybe add some additional words when they're talking about. I want to just go density by talking about, um, respect our appreciation for the forest land, for agricultural. Aspects, you know, respect for wildlife, water, maybe. Some words like that, which is kind of, I think, capture some additional people's definition of what it means to be rural. I thought that might be helpful. And initially, I thought density is a lot of. One of the things that I didn't put it here was referencing back to the other components. You know, some of it's like that, the whole discussion of rural and wildlife and all that comes out of a couple of different poems and pretty less stated there. So that could be one thing, as stated in other components of this plan. The other part, thank you for that, that's good. Um, the other part that I, I, I wanted to put it in, but I hesitated, I just wanted to discuss it here. The whole issue of, as a principle that's guiding us is the continuity. Uh, of, of a designated area. And not end up with islands, as a principle. And, and also, I think that would. Hopefully, that would spur discussions if someone came in and said, well, I, I'd like to change the comp plan designation and map, and then the zone. For my use, that I wanna have, the island thing, the non, non, uh. Surrounded by that, that kind of whatever, like we're just. Contility of the area. So we make the same argument for a zoning district, but the district is just that, it's not. A bunch of area, fun by islands or different. But in the same principle, a lot to, so if we can perhaps a language for that, or like, whatever, it's a guy who's for his permission. So hesitate to put it, maybe it's something special. That was first my comment, which maybe you expand a little bit on that definition of the rule, like you see it, and we've applied that. Um, while I'm in that same area, I think my company's upon a death, because I think that's the three people. I think myself and Dwight Jordan's. Probably would have started when you respond and then to do. Part of the, and that, that was part of the reason that we decided not to keep the, the matrix, because of the density, or what density is like. Density of essentially this housing.
It's parcel density.
One of the parcels per lot. Density by itself is something of something. You know, um. Pounds per square, but treated, uh, um. Density, it's a rate. Minimum parcels, parcel size of what?
Minimum parcel size.
Yeah, before. Which directly relates to the land use density. Which is either residential or, no, residential, residential lots. So, I don't know. Can you show down? I, I haven't been able to pull it up on my computer. For the rest of them.
Oh.
And then really, oh, that's fine, you know, gone with just, uh, maybe the density also, the idea that we're trying to keep density. Uh, closer to the, the children, the village.
Yeah.
Think that, and or, and for, in hooking there, that's it.
I think that's, that's a next paragraph.
Yeah. Um, I, I thought about putting in the, just in that whole. Lot size and density discussion. The fact that, like, a few of our incorporated areas have been gone, so I meant to be. So that could then more, more, uh, incentive to, yeah, that's. The services, and then building area that has proper sized blocks for services, does that even make sense? So it's kind of a mixed bag there. I, I hesitate to put that in, but just. You have to have a. Two or three paragraphs discussion about what they said, and they said, there's the principle of. Okay.
And I personally don't believe we should try to define the low character. Um, it's, it's so subjective. I mean, we struggled with this eight years ago when we started. I mean, no one can come up.
Yeah, it's amazing. Every subject, we struggled with it for months. What is it? I need to find it. Well. Yeah, certainly speaking from your design, it resolves down, you got all the trees, the building, those kind of things, sidewalks, and. It's a, it's a very bunch of urban design or urban. All right, yeah.
So the third paragraph, I guess.
Well, what have, you know, services, they're not, it's not all the stuff. Other. Other areas of the county that are serviced by. Types of service, perhaps, kind of like decisions. So, yeah, and I, well, there's, there's like areas, several services. So, if you can, I can say rather than. So if you can, I can say rather than. Both public service areas are available to private landowners, residents are located. Within the. Within the nine incorporated cities. Probably is a true statement, but most.
Yeah, yeah.
I could change, certainly change that for nine incorporated cities because. And they're around, like out in the Clarkville Valley, that two water districts serves two of the cities in the Clarkville that are their own. Andre, Houdne, Van Pointing, Dover. Priest, Priest River.
Maybe you have to, why, why you have to even limit that one, because the the. Are affected by by services, the proximity of services in every part of the county. Not necessarily just by whole communities. You've got, you've got certain, certain areas around Blanchard. You've got areas, you know, of it. And precincts in there.
Yeah.
That that have services, some pretty substantial services. Um and that's where we we have designated. Uh either commercial or even given some council areas.
It seems to resolve back to. Those services are located around the state highway system. Both fifty seven. Other, you know, off that lake. Yes, I would. These sides of the pool. Old Town and even Blanchard, right on forty one. Yeah, which again, within the. Makes sense, like services, yeah. And granted, there's, there's outlying. Buffalo Bay and Darkfield Bay have sewer systems, those I've on the first river off of. And it's not an absolute pure statement.
So I guess we have to be, sort of the threshold question is, we want to have the, we want to have principles. Like this. And we've already got. That set forth. We want to. Repeat that summary of.
The intent was, yes, we have those those designations listed out.
But we have. Have an entire language component, not just a designation.
I know, but it doesn't say anything about putting those designations on that. How do we get from that text, those descriptions? And those. Need enough portions to then map it. That's probably hold on. Something like that, a stepping stone. There's needed, what we've written already.
This is almost. To me, one way of thinking, it's almost before we wrote. The descriptors of what are the characteristics of the language definitions. This is before that, and this is why we're. And and what I would say about this particular paragraph, to get away from the cities, was really the. The bottom line is that. Services are not universally available throughout the county. They're available in certain street locations. Any of them happen to be where cities are, but that's not always the case. And the idea is, I think, to. Plus the denser, the denser development around the areas where there's certain. And that was, I think, the principle that was the same things like. Uh next view should be located along. They're highlighted. That was principle that that was the saying. You know, in rural areas. As you get further away from those, the net transportation network, and therefore getting further away from services, you should be going to less and less dense.
Yeah, and also, I just because that. In my view, there's a gap between the descriptions and so forth. And the intrinsic suitability of land and all that stuff, and then putting it all on the map. This is to let people know why we did it. It's kind of distant now, we can. theorize why, you can draw the lines yourself, connect it off, but let's see if it's.
Okay, so I think we need to rewrite that.
Yeah, I'll I'll.
Also, I think, I think, you know, we're going to do this, I think we will need to. Make these. Either bullet points or numbered points.
I know, that was my other question. I I hesitated to do bullets because. Bullets then become. Like a shot.
Well.
Not in any weighted order. This one's primary, this one's secondary, this one's tertiary, and so forth, so. Yeah, alright.
And then um. Be comfortable with the wildfire. Okay, right, that's, okay, that's fine, so then the last paragraph. Were you in that last section right now, though?
Yes.
Now I would take out the last one. We'd really probably be a precise sort of five to six.
Yeah.
And I, and I think it's important also to realize. This is not just for kind of just for cities as well. And so when it says that language, encourage, encourage urban, early, that develop in incorporated cities. I I look at that as a. Charge for the cities to allow. I guess, I don't know if it necessarily disagrees with. I I read that as encouraging the higher addresses, that those incorporated cities.
We just can do. Because we have the potential. And have those facilities available to their their people.
That's unfortunately, poorly written. Yeah. My thinking. It's not your.
So the whole land use plan, I think, is bottom.
We're not gonna deal with that. Alright, so seemingly that's what I would have suggested.
Yeah, okay, alright. Thirty two.
So then I did a summary of. Changes to land. We, I kind of drafted it primarily to see whether.
Just because Jake had that. Will be pulled out enough on the big screen.
Sorry, I'm working on that math thing.
Yeah, now that the first time, I was beginning, is this, is this completely targeted for.
You know, one of the questions that I was thinking would come up is, okay, we've got all these. Hundreds. What are we doing? I thought we ought to have some kind of explanation through.
We're number, we're number six hundred. Yeah, well, I finished. I put a, a loose block over four hundred because.
Oh, we got, what, four more today, I think, so.
I'm just gonna say hundreds.
Over four hundred this year, right?
Yes, that's true.
Over twelve. More than one. When you say hundreds. So you already said we're gonna take out that second paragraph.
I think I had it for one of this, I thought it was good. It's somebody, the only thing I had is a little bit of why I was expecting the last paragraph, one of these. I don't quite, the very small number of comments we got overall, I didn't understand why we did this. Do we need a change?
You know, my like that.
How far did you get? Just the last three from, considering the rest of the experience. We did address somebody one of my last.
The only thing that I kind of, I read in that last paragraph. The land analysis of the commission study indicated sufficient resister part. Were clearly covered by the company. I think we might need to be specific on that. Analysis. Was sufficient resister part for residential. Because if you actually look at that, and that comes to me. Uh that there was a much. Now, I also would make my point to say. Of course, and I don't know, we don't discuss this many times. That's so compared on. Ready and willing to sell it. And a buyer, you know, that's.
You can throw that in there, it's not a.
Yeah, that is, you know, no, no, exactly, I'm the chief one, you're the seller. Uh because there is, you know.
Every, every time we talked about that big number, that nineteen thousand parcels.
Is that in the residential or residential facilities? Because if you look at that analysis, it is, it is in my family, the page. With very many of the United States, I think it's a lot of this, and you have wealth. What that single mountain showed. Was only a two to three year. And there again, that's it for the one yourself.
Which is interesting, because you go back and look at both the seventy and the two thousand five plan. They say, it's not a for hundreds, but then, I think it was the two thousand five set, however, there doesn't seem to be a way. Most, you know, so it's not, yeah, it's not a latent issue that just hasn't progressed, it just. It just never come up.
Well, so I think, I don't, I don't want to get into the, you know, why. I'm trying to do it. We changed, we changed the mix. From R R to uh mixed use. That was since it's. The analysis, and we could have been, and also. I didn't, I didn't have a great.
But so that probably leads to the question we heard.
It sounds like a great summary of things. But we, well, I don't know, Jake, what, what do you think, man? I, I could. I express my concern, my concern is, people are wanting to know, what do we do? I think we need to say something about what we're doing. I don't know where it goes.
And we can include it in the staff report as part of the analysis from the.
That would be for the. For the action.
For the hearing. But it should, and then also be, be part of the presentations that we've got.
So we haven't. Discussed for a long time, the appendix. Of the population plan this two thousand four five. I think it could be one of the particles of the appendix. Don't mention that I keep emphasizing, we had the document, what, why we did. What we did by the, for the future, is going to look at, maybe you don't go down the same path again, if it's not necessary, or just claiming war. So that's possible, I, I think that. We definitely, with my suggestion, we definitely want to put it in the staff report. Not necessarily. There's something like this. The staff report. Uh the, the hearing. I think you also need, we need to decide whether you're gonna have a workshop, or should be. The changes that we made. That we don't get a thousand people on here, and say, why didn't you do this, why didn't you do that?
I agree with that. Agreed.
So we should talk about a timeline, then, if you guys are talking about adding additional work, so right now you have. A meeting next week, it was our regular scheduled. Meeting to ta, to continue this discussion, if. I think the goal from a few weeks back, once we started these workshops again, rather than the open houses, was to come up with a final draft. Um and then schedule for hearing, so if you want to add it to work, what, if you want to add a workshop before then. Would it be just to answer questions or to receive recommendations or comments that would lead towards additional changes on the map and or text? I guess that's the question of, what's the intent?
Why is test, test can revise? About this.
So I actually have it on an agenda item for this Thursday for the board to decide what their process is gonna be. So when I, when I talked with. Mister Domke, who's like the liaison over my department. I said, let the planning commission do their process and you come up with your process, don't try to muddle the two. So they haven't dictated to you how, you know, how to follow, you know, this process or how to make your recommendation, how many different workshops to do. So. I felt general support when I've talked about the number of open houses and other public meetings we've held. As like an idea of it being a sufficient number, the planning commission wants to hold one more public workshop and. Invite criticism or invite additional comments on. What has been put together, I would say, come up with a final draft, presumably by the end of next meeting. I'll get you a handful of minor changes on the map, and then, like I said, I'll update the graphs and the other. The other graphics within the, the, the.
I have to say, it's not obvious to me what the advantage of doing that first having here, because when you think about what we do at a hearing, we present. I have to say, it's not obvious to me what the advantage of doing that first having here, because when you think about what we do at a hearing, we present. What it is we're having hearing about, to give you all the sense, the final version of the management statement. It would be a perfect opportunity to talk about this document here, what, what, what are the changes to be made from this original draft? Who knows, whenever it was, during the whole process of having workshops around the county and looking at comments and useful changes would be made. And then we invite comment. Right, and, and all of that is noticed ahead of time, so people have a chance to look at. What are the different proposals before you're done with the meeting and they get to write comments and, and then at that point. Based on the comments, you decide where to go. We, we decided we have to do another revision, or we decide we didn't get any comments and we go ahead and approve.
You, you could also schedule, like, two days of a, of a hearing, you don't have to. We can schedule it for a Tuesday and Thursday or something along those lines. Like, the budget hearing is another good example, when the, the county does it, they start it in the morning and they do another budget hearing in the evening, so it's. They hold hearing, and hearing is just a dedicated time for citizens to come in and voice, you know, have a protected time to voice their, their opinion on something, right?
Have to, people have to make recommendations on the, of the hearing.
Right. Something like that, I'd have to look, yeah. Yeah.
But, so.
So we could, I mean, you can accomplish a similar thing, and then we could still get on the, the docket for a hearing, and we can put it on for a couple of days. I don't, you have some options, is all I'm giving you.
All right, all right, so let's just okay then. Next week, we're just gonna look at the changes that have been made ourselves. Text maps, everything seems, we're satisfied with it. We need to feel on whatever split from.
Split designated areas.
Can't see all of that. And. They, I don't, yes or no, there's no, no, again. Potentially, we're definitely on the eighteen. Who review all changes. And then have I, we then need a workshop, or it was going to?
No, I, I, I brought up the workshop because I thought we need to discuss it. I'm not ready to. So we can notice the hearing, I think Dave, Dave makes a good point, I think we've been, you can notice a hearing, we've had medicine on yet, so. Public comment, if we've tried through the.
No, we. No, no. We would need. Well, we, we need at least. We need a couple of weeks for a noticing time period, so. We need to come up with a final draft, don't make any other changes. And then have a hearing, you can make changes to the recommendation at the hearing, but what you, what you notice as the hearing, this is our map. Don't go make more changes to it, say, Jake, fix it, because then we have to change and renotice and become some whole thing, so.
That's why.
Correct. Um. That title changed at the board level, the statute that governs the substantial changes. Changed last July, so they can make substantial changes without doing an additional hearing, the board can't, so. I'd have to. I, I don't, yeah, I don't see why it wouldn't. Right, you're making a recommendation, so.
All right, so listen, I, I would encourage. The commission members to, to go back to review the comments. Make sure that we covered. What we need to cover, and so we're all ready to finalize or something.
I've gotten through about half of the, the problem parcels, if you want to call them that, the split designated. There are a few that I do want some input on, if you want to go over any of those tonight, we can. We're only at six forty-five. We usually go till late, so I'm, I'm ready for the long run. It looks like if there are groups of them, it doesn't let me select individual properties and make changes, I'm not, there must be some issue. He did kind of throw this together in the last few days for me, so some of these are just very large, let me grab my laptop. I've gotten around Priest Lake, down through Blanchard, kind of worked my way around, I haven't gotten to Sully yet, so I was working my way into U shape. And start up in Priest. This is a really good one. That's about fifty fifty, half is in R five and, or rural residential and half is in Ag Forest. You look at the zoning on the property, it's split R five and R ten. Ag Forest, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Easy. Let's see if I missed any more. This is an interesting one, it's not a fifty fifty, but you have waterfront and then upland, so this might be one you just leave alone, or you can go to Ag Forest as well, so.
Well, if you make that waterfront, that's part of that, right?
Yep. See what I mean, like, the zoning splits it, you can see the zoning line is right there, and this is all Ag Forest. Yeah. Looks like it's split by a roadway, so. Yeah. So we can leave that one alone, unless you guys want to change it. Yeah. Oh, it's split right now, Ag Forest and Rec, that's. Both in zoning and designation.
I, I disagree, I think we're taking someone's. Right away when they have something that's on rec. Then their neighbors are rep on both sides. We need to split zone, we need to split zone, they have to, but I would not take that.
Typically, I'm against the split zone, but given there's a roadway that goes between, it's easy. So the reason why, maybe I should explain this, the split designations and split zones is because it's not a surveyable line. So where do you define the different uses, right? So if it's a roadway, it's a lot easier to define, because the roadway is what's splitting those two. So it's easier for a survey to go and say, okay, this is the one side, this is the other, these are the split uses, right? But if it's just some ambiguous line that follows, you know, some, some planner drew a line on a parcel, like. Yeah, exactly. Yep. I, I don't know. So again, this, these are suburban on the front. And then R five in the back. The design, that's zoning, so the designation, I, it wouldn't let me flip this one back, I accidentally clicked on this one instead of this one, so. This one, the majority rule, right, that makes a lot of sense. This one, it's just that frontage, you want to leave it as mixed use or change it to R five, and then this is along a skinny cigar of. This is one property, these ones next door are split. Correct, yeah, this is outside of Old Town. So. Right, I left the hard one for you guys. Correct, yeah, some of these are, the lots have already been split, like, down the road here, so. Thoughts on this one first? Okay. And the, the neighbor. Yeah. Yeah.
What, what's on that property right now?
That's a good question.
Well, down on highway, though, I mean.
Looks like.
I don't know what that is. That next to the.
Oh, that's, oh, that's, yeah, that's all.
No. Off course is further over. Yeah, right here. The back.
I don't know if that's real property, I don't know, it's not, I was thinking of.
Yeah. I don't think so, I could pull it up on my other viewer and pull up the slope if you guys want to look at it. I mean, given it's a residential use and it's. You know, that's ten acre size, you could make it R five and. Rural residential. Thoughts? Correct, looks like it has a house on it. I could double check the CUP layer to see if it has any. No, it doesn't. Okay, so if we go south, I think there was a couple in Blanchard I wanted your opinion on. Nope. Double check. It was Segal had a handful that were. These are just very large properties. This looks close to a fifty fifty. But it's, it's a bigger piece, so I wasn't gonna make the call myself, hundred and sixty-seven acres.
It's a hundred and sixty ninety.
Hundred and sixty-seven, yeah.
Well, the only problem is that, that bottom part sure looks like it's always without the fives, I agree with that minor part. That should be a tense with that, that part within that section line.
Um, I can tell you, I think it's zoned R five and R ten split.
So this is currently grow.
Uh, some of it is.
I mean, the current designation.
Some of it is. I think they're split.
So it's real five and back towards, that's, that's the zone. Right, like that, right, with designation holding growth.
Oh, it looks like it's all rural residential, yes. The, the current, because of, yeah, you're right, Mr. Lynn Scott. Because we followed that rule of. No.
Why did we make it R four? Yeah, it must have been R ten or the other ones.
Because it's split, yep. Yes, R ten, R five.
That's why the.
Yep. Is that the consensus?
Have you, have you talked to Bill on this?
So you think on the, on the land use side, you're not doing any kind of takings, right? Because this is not changing ordinance. If, if it results to a zone change, then I have not had that conversation about changing the zone. So.
But there's language goes in, it can change. It can. It can. But I, I don't, I don't see the problem with that. You found that, for genuine, how comfortable it is, no. So you're concerned that there's a priority subdivision there, that would be done. No, no, I'm just saying, in, in general, not that's just particular person. But a scenario such as this. Do they have any? It's just conversation.
You're just worried about a takings, right? That if they have the potential for something.
That could be part of it.
Oh, but. He, right now. You know, he, it depends which way you go, I guess. He has a right to subdivide some of his property, the five, the parcels, and change it so that he can. He could argue that he took something away from him.
But I don't know that he doesn't absolutely say he can. That's the case, that every, every large town. That we've now made a day for, it's the same body. But now, before, all you have to do is do one for the.
Personally, I wouldn't look. I've said this before, I am one of those people. There's something in R ten right now, and we're gonna make it AF ten. And it's, I don't look at it that way. So, because I never felt like I had a right to take my property and divide it into fives.
I don't, I'm not.
So to me, it's just.
Same for that, for you, but. I don't see how. If you're taking them down through two groups, it's where we are. And somehow, you know, taking away the property lines, I don't, that we, we've already done that. I don't think we are, I don't quite agree with that.
Well, that's, I think that's the opinion that Matt would like to get from Bill. Does this, does Bill feel like, like we're putting, like we're putting the county at risk? And I, and I would restrict it specifically to places where we, where we took somebody from. R five, who moved them to a land use designation, where we follow through with the zoning, it's not going to be R five anymore, it's going to be a ten. You know, the way I look at it, when you, when you're in an R five area, you have property that's greater than ten acres, you have a right administratively to divide that and divide it for process. And, and some people have argued that it's value that's attached to that. With their property.
I don't think.
And if you change it to ten acre zoning, now you no longer have that right. Yes, you could come ask for a special exception and jump through a couple groups and do it, but. No longer a right that's attached to that property. I'm, I'm not saying everybody who's in that situation is, that all of a sudden come back and, and, you know, make an issue of it with the county. But I think it's worth talking to Bill to understand.
But if we. That was, that was specifically what we did, and, you know, if we change, we haven't made the hard turn. It was made an AM.
Right, right.
Basically, eventually, it's back force. And that hasn't changed, because.
I think I understand Mr. Lynn Scott's concern, feel free to, like, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt. What you're concerned about is if we change, this is a good example, right, where this is split fives and tens, if we change the land use designation and then the zoning on this to. Ag Forest ten and remove it from R five. Which is, that's what this is what to be doing, laying the foundation for that type of change, that it could be a potential taking, because he has the ability now to divide it into fives, or at least that, that part of the property. Where we would be taking that away.
So.
Is that what I'm? Yep.
That's the takings act. Where it says that, that any property owner feeling that they've been taken past, put in analysis.
Yep.
That, that could result from some of this, where it took in the home. So, yeah, it's a test, that's maybe different.
Yeah. Yeah, sixty-seven eighty is the comprehensive plan and these changes are starting through sixty-seven eighty.
Yeah.
Seventy-eight, so we could see potentially. Done job, we'll do a lot of the volumes.
Yeah. So by majority here, this one is R five, but I think. We turn that.
Yeah.
But it's split zoned right now, rural service center and R five. Yep. This is a Coca-Cola. Right next to that. Firewood processor. It's rural service center and R five. Off the highway, yeah.
Is there an existing rural, rural service center?
I don't know about the use.
That's, that's the word on.
I think this is just a, a residence.
Oh, that's, that's, that's the old library.
No, that's further north. Gundox is up here.
Huge. It's real. You know, some of them are high. Oh, yeah, way over time, way up the hill. Yeah. We have more. I don't, I don't.
I have no idea.
I have. That's another one that I'm certainly.
No, it doesn't, but. You, you, you can leave them, right? You can let that problem for another day for somebody else, right? Future planning commission problem.
Place.
Maybe. Could be. It could be that those were two separate lots and somewhere along the line, someone combined them. Right? That's kind of what I'm thinking with some of these. There's a. A, another, I'll, I'll leave that for now and let you guys dwell on it. We don't have to make these decisions tonight. Um, these ones are split zoned and I, I know these are under common ownership, if I, if I remember right, these. Properties to the north and south.
They're right behind the view.
Yeah. Fields I know are, no, it's not under. So. I know they, they've had some struggles trying to do some property line adjustments and some other stuff on this property. Um. So this is. Yeah. So I just know the zoning and the land use designations are both kind of messy. I think it'd be really nice to clean those up and follow up property line, whatever you guys decide. Um, I think it's. I think it's five acres on either one of them, if I remember right. Yeah, four and a half and five. Okay. I mean. Suburban, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. It's easy. Um, I'll leave these split ones for now and I'll, I'll, I'll wait on a, a legal analysis. And I think that's the majority. I'll, I'll finish reviewing the rest of these and I can present these to you guys next time. Um, some of these might be losing.
We're gonna.
And I'll update the graphs and get those, uh, see if any, anything changes that would need to change to the analysis of the text. Anything that said two thousand nineteen to twenty three, I'll update to twenty four. And modify any, I, do you want me to redline the text changes for you guys? Or just make the. Okay. I'll, I'll put it as a track changes and then I'll update all the graphs.
All right. So with that, anything else for your next meeting?
One question I have is, do you want to define further, you know, what you're going to review? So right now we kind of have this blanket. We're going to look at all these things.
Oh.
Um, but I've had some questions as like, what order are they going to review these as? Okay.
And pretty quickly.
Okay. I will try.
There we go.
I'll try to get a legal analysis uh from Bill on your question, Mister Lynn Scott, by next week as well.
That'd be good. We have to submit them writing.
No. I, I, he's been pretty good about just replying pretty quickly. That would be nice. So we can add it to the record.
We are adjourned until uh March eighteen, uh, by Friday. This room.